Hello and welcome to the Eureka City Council member meeting, September 5th. We're glad you're all here. So we will open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jerojigi. Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez is absent. Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Here.
Mayor Burgel?
Here.
Thank you. And would all who care to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And did we have a report out of closed session?
No action to report out of closed session. Mayor?
Thank you. And for our mayor's reports, I wanted to take a moment. You know, the city has a lot of different commissions and a lot of ways to get involved and to be a part of, part of the community. And we lost one of our members of the Transportation Safety Commission, Caroline Chafin-Brooks, who served from 2015 to 2021. And I just want to share my appreciation for her work and dedication to our city. And I wanted to just give this certificate of recognition to her family. So if we could do that.
And she was, Caroline was a true patriot on every level. And she went about things a little bit different than I did. She was always never wanting to upset the boat. She always wanted to make sure that everybody was taken care of and acknowledged. And she did, worked hard, I should say, she worked hard to keep me, she was a keel on my boat. She, she kept me level. And we're, we're all, anybody that knew her knows what I'm trying to say. She was so special on every, every level. And we're all going to miss her and thank you so much. She would have really, really appreciated this.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your, her service. Okay. And then, yeah, and appreciation. And you know, we always, not always, but we often have opportunities for people to serve on these commissions in the city. And if you want to get involved, please reach out to us because we'd love to have, we'd love to have you. Secondly, in my mayor's reports, I just want to talk about a couple of things. First thing, which I really love, and we'll have a proclamation about this later, but I love listening to our public. And I, I heard some of our public talk about how we don't drive, we don't drive to the meeting and we don't ride our bikes to the meeting and we talk about it all the time. And so what I've done is I've decided that not only am I going to join this proclamation thing that's happening, but I've been walking to school every day for the last, every day since school started. And I'm telling you, I was telling somebody earlier, you know, the gift of that is that every day, instead of being in the car and getting all annoyed and grouchy at people for being in my way, I'm walking up the street casually, saying hi to people as I go. And it's just such a beautiful thing. And you know, I used to do it a lot when my kids were little and I've kind of lost track of that. And so I'm grateful that that's being brought forward again and that that was brought to my attention. So thank you to those constituents who pointed out that, you know, it's important to follow what we say. And I really appreciate that. And then secondly, I just wanted to mention that we did go to Wiat Days, which was last two Sundays ago, Saturdays ago. And it was fabulous. They had just the amazing cultural dancers. They had the bird singers from down south. If you've never been, I really encourage you to go. It's a great way to get to know the culture, the people, and the food is always fabulous. So that is the end of my mayor reports. And we will begin with proclamation coastal cleanup. Councilmember Bauer? I asked. No report out of closed session, correct?
Thank you. This is a City of Eureka proclamation in recognition of Coastal Cleanup Month, September 2023. Whereas the state of California has a varied coastline of sandy beaches, rocky shores, productive estuaries, marshes, tidal flats, urban areas and harbors. And whereas the marine environment is one of the most valuable resources for recreation, tourism, fishing, and other coastal activities. Coastal protection is a responsibility shared by residents, the business community, and public institutions. And whereas the North Coast Environmental Center is the Humboldt County organizer for 2023 Coastal Cleanup Month, taking place every weekend in September during an anticipated, during which an anticipated 1,000 people will clean beaches, rivers, streets, and estuaries along the entire Humboldt coastline. Neighborhood cleanups where trash is collected from streets, sidewalks, and urban areas helps prevent plastics and other debris from collecting in ocean and marine environments. And whereas the North Coast Environmental Center's Adopt a Beach began in Humboldt County over 40 years ago and is now celebrated throughout California and around the world. Last year, Humboldt County volunteers picked up over 3,500 pounds of trash from our shoreline and coastal region. And whereas residents can be proud that year after year, Humboldt County continues to be among the state's leaders in the number of volunteers who help keep our ocean, rivers, and coastline clean. Now therefore, I, Scott Bauer, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2023 as Coastal Cleanup Month and encourage individuals, businesses, service groups, and public institutions to safely hit the beach to jointly promote a healthy and productive coastal environment.
Was there anyone here to receive that proclamation tonight? Thank you. Come on up. Welcome. And if you'd like to say a few words, you're more than welcome to do that as well.
Thank you, councilmembers. I think you kind of covered all of it. So head to our website, find a cleanup near you, and we hope to see you out at the beach or in an urban environment because that just helps to keep it from getting to the beach to begin with. So, thank you.
Thanks for being here. And then we have Suicide Prevention Week with Councilmember Moulton and I believe Managing Mental Health Clinician Rosen and Deputy Director Bignacki from DHHS Behavioral Health are here. So if you want to come up to receive that proclamation, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you too for being here. City of Eureka proclamation in recognition of Suicide Prevention Week, September 10th through 16th, 2023. Whereas suicide is a national and statewide public health problem and suicide prevention is a national and statewide responsibility. Whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in the United States, the second leading cause of death among children ages 10 to 14, the third leading cause of death among ages 15 to 24, and the second leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 25 and 34. And whereas it is estimated that in 2021, there were 1.7 suicide attempts, over 48,000, suicide attempts, over 48,000 people died by suicide in the U.S. with 4,144 of those deaths occurring in California. And whereas over 90% of the people who die by suicide have a diagnosable and treatable mental health condition, although often that condition was not recognized or treated. And whereas organizations such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention are dedicated to saving lives and bringing hope to those affected by suicide through research, education, advocacy, and resources for those who have lost someone to suicide or whose struggle and urge that we, one, recognize suicide as preventable, national and state public health problem, and declares suicide prevention to be a priority. Two, acknowledge that no single suicide prevention program or effort will be appropriate for all populations or communities. Three, address the disparity in access to mental health care for underserved and underrepresented groups and advocate for ending these disparities. Four, fund new suicide research to support culturally informed and evidence-based mental health care services. Five, encourage initiatives in Eureka based on the goals contained in the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention and the 2023 California Suicide Prevention Plan. Six, promote awareness that there is no single cause for suicide and that suicide is most often occurs when stressors exceed the coping abilities of someone struggling with a mental health condition. Seven, develop and implement strategies to improve and increase access to quality mental health, substance abuse, and suicide prevention services and programs. Eight, continue advocacy to ensure we can reimagine a comprehensive suicide, mental health, and substance use crisis response system that builds on the historic new 988 number for the suicide and crisis lifeline. Now therefore, I, Katie Moulton, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim September 10th through 16th, 2023, as Suicide Prevention Week and recognize September 10th as World Suicide Prevention Day.
I'm Paul Bignacki. My wife and I are citizens of Eureka, and I'm also the, one of the deputy directors of behavioral health. I just have a few highlights I want to talk about our, our department, what we've been doing, and I'll keep my comments to three minutes. We would like to recognize that suicide and suicide prevention is an important issue that we're committed to at the department. I'd also like to recognize that stigma continues to be an issue and part of the daily work that we do. We look to break down barriers and stigma at every opportunity that's presented and then some. Any way that we can reduce barriers for those in need of services is our focus. A couple of years ago, we started a suicide prevention initiative with the department. And part of this initiative involved contracting with the Community Connections Psychological Associates. They're a group of two psychologists in the Bay Area that specialize in suicide and suicide prevention and also the approach with an equity lens. This is a two-year contract that we have with them. Well, they'll be assessing our entire system from the front reception all the way up to our psychiatrists. Anybody that touches or has any kind of connection to the public, we want to make sure that they have the tools and the resources available to them to be able to assess and intervene as necessary. They'll be looking at all of our existing tools for our teams to assess individuals and make sure that they are adequate and meeting industry standard. Additionally, we are part of the Public Health Suicide Prevention Network as well as a standing member of the steering committee. We're also a regular participant in the Suicide Fatality Review Committee. We've recently engaged in distribution of lock boxes so families and individuals can lock up medications or weapons to make their homes safer. And more recently, our Children's Behavioral Health was chosen one out of 10 counties in the state to participate in the Youth Suicide Prevention Reporting in Crisis Response Pilot Program. That's a, that's a lot there. This effort really is to help county to improve on how quickly we respond to clients, families, and communities when there's a suicide or a suicide attempt. Additionally, our department is in the process of developing a plan that would increase the number and scope of our mobile response teams in the near future. So as we continue to invest in these resources and commit to attending to these important focuses for our department, we hope to further contribute to the overall health and wellness of our communities that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you very much for initiating this and for having such a stance. This is actually a pretty big deal. In the advocacy world, it's, it's oftentimes there's, there's efforts that the community brings up, and sometimes it's difficult not seeing government kind of sending some of those efforts down. And so it's really meaningful to have a proclamation such as this for the community, those who have been affected by suicide, and those who work in the field of mental health trying to prevent it. So thank you. My name's Jacob Rosen. I'm the managing clinician with CARE here for the city, Crisis Alternative Response of Eureka. I wrote a couple of things down, but I, I think I'm actually just going to deviate from that and say that the stigma piece is a huge deal for mental health in general, but also for suicide. It's something that is a massive barrier for people to access treatment. It's a massive barrier for people to get reimbursed for treatment. It's a massive barrier for family members trying to get their loved ones treatment. And at the end of the day, suicide and suicidal thoughts are a symptom. It's a symptom much like a fever to a cold. And you know, if we all think about it when we tell a loved one or a friend that, you know, hey, got a fever, the reaction is typically pretty benign. If we tell a loved one or a friend and disclose that we're having suicidal thoughts, it's a completely different reaction. And there's a lot of fear, there's a lot of fear of the unknown. And so the more that we talk about this, the more that we make this public and, and part of our kind of national dialogue, the better. And so thank you very much for, for kind of promoting that and propping this up. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see too, we have Heidi from AFSP. Would you like to come tell us what's going on this weekend about this proclamation? I see you out there. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Heather.
Heather, I'm so sorry.
I was like, I think you're talking about me. I have friends named Heidi and they're good people, so it's all right.
It's been a long day. Forgive me.
Yeah. Well, I have a flyer. Just like.
There you go.
So first off, on behalf of the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, thank you for accepting that proclamation. My name's Heather Freitas. I'm the walk chair of the 2023 Arcata Out of the Darkness Community Walk that's happening in Arcata, actually this Sunday. The walk is a benefit for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, and we offer a brief program of speakers who share their connections to the cause, which is of course to address mental health and suicide prevention. We'll have community partners onsite, like tabling, so it's a great opportunity to connect community directly with resources in our community. And we'll also have honoring and remembrance activities. So this event really helps bring our community together for their grief and healing journey. I think sometimes it's hard for people to find opportunities for that where there's so much openness. And so the walk itself is about 2.2 miles. It's not that long, mostly flat. We actually have an alternate route this year if people have limited mobility or other needs, so they can still join us and walk. And it's happening on the Arcata Plaza. We'll, we'll loop around in Arcata and we begin and end on the plaza. And so if people want to join us, they can go to afsp.org/arcata to register for the event. And it begins around 10:00 in the morning.
Great.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you so much, Heather.
Yeah. I got it right.
So that's this weekend, Sunday at 9:00 a.m. at the plaza. Thank you. So moving on for our final proclamation of the evening, a week without driving, which is what I've been practicing kind of half, halfway, for Councilmember Castellano. Is that yours?
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah.
And Colin Fisk, are you here from Citizens for Responsible Transportation Priorities? Do you want to go ahead and come up? Thank you. And thanks for being here. This is the City of Eureka proclamation in recognition of a week without driving, October 2nd through 8th, 2023. Whereas access to mobility is a fundamental part of health and community connection, allowing Euricans to reach educational and employment opportunities, medical services, shopping, recreation, and visit friends and family. And whereas, as the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics estimates, the cost of owning a car is approximately 72 cents a mile, with average households spending on transportation reaching $10,961 a year in 2021, many people cannot afford the cost of a car. And nearly a third of people residing in the U.S. do not have a driver's license, either because of their age or a condition that does not allow them to drive. And whereas transportation represents the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the United States, in order to meet our state's greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, we must reduce emissions in our transportation sector. And whereas in addition to greenhouse gas emissions, cars also create tire dust that can enter watersheds, have necessitated freeway expansions that have been detrimental to neighborhoods, historically home to communities of color, and require impervious surfaces for parking, with an estimated 3.4 parking spaces for every car in the United States, all of which have contributed to transportation being an important environmental justice concern. And whereas going a week without driving is a great way to understand how we can improve our current transportation system to better meet the needs of Euricans and improve the enhanced, and enhance transportation options such as transit, biking, and walking pathways as key strategies in our decarbonization efforts. Now therefore, I, Leslie Castellano, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2nd through 8th, 2023, as a week without driving. And I encourage all people in our city and region to join me in this special observance.
My name is Colin Fisk, and I'm the executive director of CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I want to thank Mayor and the council for issuing the proclamation and also thank those of you who have already taken the pledge to participate in the week without driving as individuals. And if you haven't taken that pledge yet, there's plenty of time. And you can do it on our website, which is at transportationpriorities.org/weekwithoutdriving. I also want to thank the Disability Mobility Initiative, which is the organization that first started the week without driving in Washington State a few years ago, as well as America Walks, which is the national organization coordinating this year's first national week without driving. CRTP is the local sponsor of the week without driving, and we're one of dozens, if not maybe hundreds, of local organizations sponsoring these events across the country. So as you heard, nationwide, about 30% of Americans can't drive. Many of those who can't drive are kids, some are seniors, many other have disabilities or other reasons for not driving, like not being able to afford a car. Local data here are harder to come by, but we do have higher disability and poverty rates than the national average, so it's possible that an even greater percentage of Humboldt County residents and Euricans can't drive. The experiences of these folks are critically important to understand as we make decisions about the local transportation system. So the week without driving is an invitation for everyone, but particularly for elected officials, transportation planners, and other decision makers to get some firsthand experience of what it's like to live without the option of driving. So the rules are pretty simple. You can get around however you want, but the challenge is to not drive yourself in a car. That applies to all of your activities, not just your work commute. And if you normally transport other family members or other friends, it applies to those trips as well. You can ask someone else to drive you, but we ask that you make a note of how much you feel like you owe that person in their time, and if you feel obligated to then, you know, support them in other ways. You could use taxis or ride-hill services if those are available. But again, we ask that you think about how that cost would impact your decisions if this was regularly your only option. And finally, it's important to say that this isn't a disability simulation or a test of how easily you can find alternatives. We know that it can be easier or harder to give up driving depending on where you live or if you can outsource your driving and other needs to other people. And having to drive during the challenge also doesn't signify failure, but the point is just to consider how someone without the option would have coped and what choices they might have had to make. So leaders who have participated in this event in previous years in Washington State have really reported learning a lot from the experience, and we expect that'll be the case locally as well. So again, thanks for issuing the proclamation. And please, if you haven't taken the pledge already, I encourage you to do that and encourage your, your friends and colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
And now is the time for public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. So with that, do we have anybody from the public who'd like to talk? Hello, Mr. James.
How you doing?
Good.
Love your new profile picture.
Thank you.
So I can't sugarcoat what I got to say, and I'm not even going to try. So I was really saddened to see that a member of the Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence was caught masturbating, exposing himself at table bluff overlook in front of cars that were coming in and out, possibly some with children. By the way, I have a, I interviewed the eyewitness that filed the police report, so there's no excusing it. This happened. This is a fact. Even sadder to see that none of the local media has reported on it whatsoever, including Lost Coast Outpost or, or Redwood News or North Coast News. I don't know why they're protecting a pedophile in our community, but it's absolutely disgusting, and I feel it's my civic duty to expose it. Like I said, anybody can watch the interview I did with the man that filed the police report on Lost Coast Populous. You could see the interview. And on top of that, even more disgusting is to see that the Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence are having a kids' day in the park with face painting and all that crap. I wonder if they'll invite Clinton Ellis Gilmore there to be around the kids after he's been caught doing that. I'm just curious if they will or not. And will they be painting, you know, the kids up to be like drag queens with devil horns? Will they be making them look like demons, you know? We'll see because we'll be there to film it. And I just think it's disgusting the local media won't protect children in this community. Even the sheriff's department will not post it on their page. They'll post something about a burglary. And then when I asked them to post this, they said, well, it's not a danger to the community. Well, neither are the burglars. They've already been caught. But they're posting that. They don't want to warn parents the dangers of this guy? I mean, he, this guy is emboldened. He was smoking meth, had the door of his pickup open with his leg hanging out through the window, the other one on the other side of the dash with his legs spread wide open where cars were coming in and out. He was wanting people to see him, as you will see with the eyewitness testimony. And if he's emboldened to do that, bold enough to do that, what else is he going to do next? Quit supporting these pedophiles.
Thank you, James. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Reese Thompson, and I am here to continue reading Proverbs 4 from the Holy Bible. My children, listen when your father corrects you. Pay attention and learn, learn good judgment, for I am giving you good guidance. Don't turn away from my instructions, for I too was once my father's son, tenderly loved as my mother's, motherly, mother's only child. My father taught me, take my words to heart, follow my commands, and you will live. Get wisdom, develop good judgment. Don't forget my words or turn away from them. Don't turn your back on wisdom, for she will protect you. Love her, and she will guard you. Getting wisdom is the wisest thing you can do. And whatever else you do, develop good judgment. If you prize wisdom, she will make you great. Embrace her, and she will honor you. She will place a lovely wreath on your head. She will present you with a beautiful crown. My child, listen to me and do as I say. I will teach you wisdom's ways and lead you in straight paths. When you walk, you won't be held back. When you run, you won't stumble. Take hold of my instructions, don't let them go. Guard them, for they are the key to life. Don't do as the wicked. Don't do as the wicked do, and don't follow the path of the evil doers. Don't even think about it. Don't go that way. Turn away and keep moving; for evil people can't sleep until they've done their evil deed for the day, for their evil deed for the day. They can't rest until they've caused someone to stumble. They eat the food of wickedness and drink the wine of violence. The way of the righteous is like the first gleam of dawn, which shines ever brighter until the full day of, full light of day. But the way of the wicked is like total darkness. They have no idea what they are stumbling over. My child, pay attention to what I say. Listen carefully to my words. Don't lose sight of them. Let them penetrate deep in your heart. For they bring life to those who find them and healing to their whole body. Guard your heart above all else, for it determines the course of your life. Avoid all the perverse talk. Stay away from corrupt speech. Look straight ahead and fix your eyes on what lies before you. Mark out a straight path for your feet. Stay on safe path. Don't get sidetracked. Keep your feet from falling evil. Thank you. Bless you.
Thanks, Charisse. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. My name is Linda Stansbury. I am here as a community member to thank you for your suicide proclamation and acknowledge World Suicide Day, World Suicide Prevention Day on September 10th. I have personally lost several family members, several friends, and several community members to suicide. At this point, I'm really optimistic about the new tools that we have to address this issue, and that's thanks to the hard work of our local folks in the Suicide Prevention Network, for our friends at the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention, and your own county DHHS. So I would really encourage our community members to take a leadership role in addressing this issue in several ways. First, by researching and understanding, recognizing the signs of suicidal ideation, by getting trained in the QPR, that's the Question Persuade Refer methodology of working with folks who are having suicidal ideation, and the county offers several free trainings. Learning about other tools, such as reducing access to firearms and medication, other methods of harm. The Keep It Safe program was mentioned, so there is a free lockbox distribution through the county. And if you are a business or a nonprofit, it is, it is available for you to become a distribution center for those lockboxes. Just Google Keep It Safe Humboldt. Finally, I just want to say how important, as was said before, it is to de-stigmatize talking about mental health, to de-stigmatize talking about suicide, and for us all to be leaders on this important issue. So thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Hi there, welcome.
Hi, hello, Mayor and Eureka City Council. My name's Danielle Daniel. I am speaking on the behalf of Decriminalize Nature Humboldt. And I wanted to bring into you personally a hundred and five letters that have been signed just in this past week with the community supporting decriminalization of entheogens within Eureka City limits. And I emailed you all the resolution to decriminalize entheogens in Eureka, and I also included a printed version over there. And so practices with entheogenic plants and fungi have long existed and have been considered sacred to human cultures and interrelationships with nature for thousands of years. So entheogens are psilocybin mushrooms, cacti that contains musculin, ayahuasca, and iboga. And there has been a ton of scientific research that has showed the therapeutic value of these medicines. Cacti that contains musculin, for example, helps alcoholics overcome alcoholism. Iboga helps people get off of substances such as methamphetamine and heroin. And psilocybin mushrooms helps with cluster headaches, that helps with depression, anxiety, end-of-life anxiety, and really to deepen your connection with self and with nature. And ayahuasca cures or helps to heal treatment-resistant depression and also helps to process grief. So decriminalization would protect the Eureka community to heal with these medicines. And decriminalization is, we would be protected to gift, gather, and grow these medicines, and to gather in community to heal. And this does not include anyone under twenty-one. It doesn't include on school grounds, does not include driving under the influence or any public disturbance. But yeah, so I am hoping, we are hoping to communicate more with you in order to give you what it is that you need to feel safe and confident in decriminalizing entheogens for those within Eureka. And yeah, thanks for your time.
Thank you for being here. So friends, I love to clap too, but it can be intimidating for folks, so maybe if you just do the hands, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Hello.
Thank you, Mr. Parr.
My name is Caroline. I'm going to be reading Psalms 3.
Welcome, Caroline.
I always do that. Psalms of David. "We fled from Abisham, his son. O Lord, how we, how they multiplied that they troubled me. Many that they rise against me. Many they, who, many they are so, sorry, many there who saved of my soul. There is no help for him in God. But thou, O Lord, art my shield for me. My glory, thee lifted up my head. I cried to the, to the Lord with my voice, and he heard from me the holy hill, from the holy hill. I laid me down and slept. I awakened, for the Lord sustained me. I will not be afraid of the ten thousand people that have set themselves against me on all sides. Arise, O Lord, save me from, O God, for thou hast smitten all my enemies upon the cheekbone. Thou hast broken the teeth of ungodly. Salvation belong, belongeth to the Lord. Thy blessings upon the people." Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Hi, welcome.
Hi. I'm a little bit nervous. My name is Betty Kegel, and I am here speaking in support of Decriminalize Nature and to express my strong support for the decriminalization of entheogens in our city, with a particular emphasis on the importance of healing in ceremony or community based on my personal experience, the historical use of these medicines, and the current studies citing results of these healing methods. Entheogens, also known as plant medicines, have been utilized by various cultures throughout history for their profound therapeutic and spiritual benefits. Numerous indigenous communities around the world have practiced the ritual use of entheogens for centuries, considering them sacred tools for personal and communal healing. These substances have played a pivotal role in their culture and spiritual traditions, fostering a deeper and direct connection to nature, the divine, and the self. By decriminalizing entheogens, Eureka has a unique opportunity to acknowledge and honor this rich cultural heritage, and we are simply not meant to heal alone. Furthermore, scientific research in recent years has shown promising results in the potential therapeutic applications of entheogens. Studies have indicated their effectiveness in treating various mental health issues such as depression, anxiety, PTSD, and addiction, which we all know we need here in Humboldt County. The effectiveness and positive effects are measurable for one year after one group healing ceremony. The decriminalization of entheogens also aligns with the broader trend of drug policy reform that focuses on harm reduction and public health rather than criminalization. By shifting our approach towards entheogens, we can reduce the unnecessary burden on law enforcement, the judicial system, and individuals who are arrested for nonviolent drug offenses. Instead, we can redirect resources towards education, harm reduction, addiction support and services, and overall healing as a community. In conclusion, I urge you all, as part of the Eureka City Council, to consider the profound healing potential and historical significance of entheogens in various cultures by making decisions about decriminalization. Thank you all so much.
Thank you for being here. Hi there, welcome.
Hi, my name's Jen Bruce. Thanks for having me here. And thank you for the work that you do. I'm also here to advocate for Decriminalize Nature. I'll break the stigma. I'm a person in long-term recovery from addiction. I come from generations of military and veterans, and I struggled with depression and anxiety most of my life. I went through the Western model, and it helped a little bit. I got my life back in 12-step, but it didn't give me the quality back. And it was a last-ditch effort before I went down the pharmaceutical route after I sought to destroy many people's lives that were close to me, including my own family, with the side effects and the fact that it doesn't treat the root cause. Because the thing is, when we're looking at mental health and how we're missing the mark, is it's not really mental health that we're seeing in most people, especially the term treatment-resistant. What we're looking at is unhealed trauma. And our model, our Western model, does not address that, and it's going to be many, many decades until we do. One of the leading experts in trauma in the world right now is Dr. Gabor Maté, and he's also one of my teachers and mentors, and he's also one of the biggest advocates for psychedelic therapy. So as a last-ditch effort, I went for ibogaine, and it was the first time I felt good in my body in my entire life, and I've done everything wholeheartedly. So much so that I changed my career, and I've been working in the field for eight years. I was on the pilot project for the Navy SEAL Team Six for ibogaine. They'd been in the Mayo Clinic for ten years with no results. After one week with us, they were good. And not only are they good for themselves, but they can go home and help their wives and their children, because this gets passed on generationally if it's not broken. I've seen so much corruption in the medical model. The medical model we have is broken. These medicines are not intended to be used in a clinical setting. That's part of the problem. The community-based healing that we've already heard about tonight is required. It's been done this way for, iboga comes from Africa, and it's been used since the beginning of humanity. And so we need to insulate ourselves here and not let what happened to the cannabis medicine get taken over by Big Pharma. We need to create a sanctuary where people can come and heal. Iboga is the most powerful medicine on the planet for trauma and for addiction, specifically heroin. And right now, there's nowhere in the United States for people to go get it safely. So I encourage you guys to consider, we've been decriminalized in Arcata for over a year without any incident, and I would be happy to talk to anybody about my experience working with it personally or professionally, if there's any concerns at all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Welcome, Mr. Parr.
Well, Mayor Burgele, I know we're not supposed to address you individually, but you just addressed me directly with my dead name for the second time tonight. And I just wanted to, especially since we've had the discussion tonight about suicide and whatnot, I wanted to point out that the intentional persistent use of a person's dead name after they've made it clear what their preferred pronouns are is a, is a kind of violence. It's a kind of violence that could make a person want to kill themselves. And the only reason that I could think that you would persist in doing it is that you want me dead, and that does not look good for the mayor of our community. Beyond that, the main reason I came down was because I have requests that I could have just made, as easily made to Pam, but I want, I want there to be a public record that I'm asking for this, and it refers to the City Matters assertion that there was a survey conducted four or five years ago that led him down the pathway believing that we need to pave over our, not pave over, but build, build housing on all of our parking lots. And because it's what the citizenry wanted. So I would like a copy of that survey. I would like to know who was contracted to conduct it. I would like to know what the parameters were for the questions. I would like to know what the responses were, and I would like to know why all of that led anyone, could have led anyone to believe that the citizenry of Eureka as a whole wants all of our downtown parking lots destroyed and have just, we were led to believe it was low-income housing, but, but it's obviously just regular commercial housing funded by the taxpayers. I would like to know why, how that survey led anyone to believe that that's what we wanted. So, and Pam, you have my email address? I'd like all that information. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Welcome. Hi, I'm Deborah Dukes, and I'm here to tell you that I'm thrilled you're walking to work.
Thank you.
I'm one of the many people who live in our community, which is most of Eureka City Limits, who live within walking distance of almost any place I want to go. And I walk a lot. And then I tore my meniscus, so I drove tonight. So I will be back on foot by October 2nd or whenever it is. But I would like to encourage all of you who live close to anything to try walking there. One of my challenges, admittedly after I retired, was to plot out where I go and the best way of getting there by walking. And it's been kind of a challenge for me, and I've really enjoyed it. Even during COVID, I was out walking because it was the only thing I could do. And I lost weight, my cholesterol went down, everything was just hunky-dory. So I highly recommend that. Peripherally, I would like to say that I lost my sister to suicide, and I really appreciate the proclamation and the people who are here working for suicide prevention. My heart still breaks about her. And I want to thank all of you for the work you do both here and outside. I know several of you from the world, and I deeply appreciate the fact that you're willing to dedicate some of your time and energy to do this in addition to your real lives and keep walking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Claudette.
Welcome, Claudette.
After listening to all this stuff, my heart aches, and so I am just drawn to pray for you as well as everyone else, and lift up our Lord. So Father God, I just thank you for this opportunity that you have given me to stand here before the mayor and the council and all these others that work in the city, as well as your people listening. And I ask, Lord, that you give them the wisdom to govern Eureka. I thank you that you have chosen them, you chose them before they were even born, to be in this position, and I ask that you help them to use you, to be led in the things that they do, the things that they say, the things that they vote on, because you are the answer, Father. I've been suicidal. I've been a drug addict. I've been down those roads of oppression and depression, and it was only through you, Jesus, that I've come out of it. And I give you all the glory and all the honor and all the praise because you are Mr. Solution. You have the answer to every problem that comes up here and says, what about this? What about that? Proclaim that, proclaim, you have all the answers. I am a living testimony, and I thank you for saving my life out of drugs, out of suicide, out of murderous thoughts, out of addictions, Lord. Out of cutting, I give you the glory, and I ask that you help our city council members and mayor to seek your face for these answers to the solutions in our city. These boards for suicide prevention, that they would seek your face, Father God, for the solutions, because I know that I know that you have the answer, and you will not fail to let them down, Lord. Be glorified, Jesus. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you, Claudette.
Hi, welcome. Hi there. My name's Breann Hutchinson, and I'm an Associate Professional Clinical Counselor here in Humboldt County. And I'm here kind of on two regards. So I'm a volunteer for the American Foundation of Suicide Prevention in helping to organize the Remembrance Walk that's happening this Sunday, so just giving an extra plug-in for that. It's really a walk that I've been going to for the last five years and a place to honor collective grief and honor the impact of suicidality, as well as to offer resources. So there's a whole plethora of community organizations that are dedicated to mental health, and so I think it can be really helpful in the And so I think it can be really helpful in the topic of mental health to visit this particular event because it would really show the local, I think, compassion and gifts that our community holds. I'm also here with Decriminalize Nature. And I wanted to advocate for this movement for a few reasons. As a mental health worker, I did my graduate program up in Portland, Oregon. And I was kind of there, right in the movement when they were legalizing psilocybin in the state of Oregon. And one thing I noticed about that process is that it took away the localized impact. And so it kind of centered it outside of the local communities. And so right now, there's 15 cities across the United States that are decriminalizing plant medicines and entheogens. And currently in California, there's about, what is it, three? There's Santa Cruz, Arcata, and Oakland. And so by putting Eureka and Humboldt County on the map for this Decriminalize Nature movement, we're also advocating for the larger kind of community resources in our community to stand behind that movement as well. And I just think this holds a lot of weight in terms of risk reduction and harm reduction in our community. As a mental health clinician in a rural area, let me tell you, we are under-resourced. We are severely under-resourced. And I just want to make a plug-in for exploring diverse and unique and multicultural options to healing because I think that it can really be a path forward to support rural communities like our own. So, thank you.
Thanks so much. Hi there, welcome.
I'm here to, in support of Decriminalize Nature. I, my, with the, I'll try to get through this with, my dad, who was my employer at the time, committed suicide three years ago. And the biggest thing that's helped me has been psilocybin ceremonies. It's helped me get through a lot of the pain and helped me access it and break through some of the things that the pharmaceuticals just put a damper on. So I just, it was, it's been a profound help. And just a community that has been helpful and supportive through it all. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Hi, welcome.
Hi. My name is Wheezy. This is the first time I've ever have came up to do anything or even been to, ever been to one of these beautiful things. But I am here on behalf of the Decriminalization of Nature. I'm just nervous.
You're good, we got you.
I, I believe in the fact of people being able to be more knowledgeable about substances that they are able to put in their body and being able to have that opportunity to decriminalize something that nature does give us. But giving knowledge to people is a very important thing because it can empower people. I don't know about you, but growing up and seeing commercials about pharmaceutical drugs and the major side effects and how they have came to a point of like, most of them are about death or just, you know, some kind of very harmful thing. Or the fact that you have to take this medication and now you have to take this medication to counteract this medication. And it goes on and on and on and the cycle just continues, right? When truly, this could be something that could be solved with as small as a microdose. And I know that there's not a lot of, there is becoming more education about how this is helping in the brain and how it is helping other people. My personal experiences has helped me. But I've also been able to be certified to be able to help other people and I helped my mom. And my mom is better today than she's ever been in her whole life. And so this is something that could be a very positive opportunity to have in a community where people can feel safe to come to. And be able to not only be able to have these medicines offered, but also to be educated in how these medicines can help. And if it's done in an appropriate way with decriminalizing, it makes it a very safe area. And so I hope that this, all testimonies help out. Sorry. Still working on my public speaking, so, but thank you so much, everybody. I really appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you, Wheezy. You did it. Yay! Oh, no, like this. Sorry. Hands like this. Okay. Thank you for being here. Is there anyone else that's in the audience that would like to speak? Hi, welcome.
Hello. I'm just concerned about all the old people advocating for shrooms. Drugs are bad. You can walk around Arcata and Eureka both. It's because you guys started with the weed stuff. Everyone knows around the world, this place loves its weed. You go with the shrooms, you're going to start advocating for pedophile-adjacent behavior like Drag Queen Story Hour for all ages. Happened down the street from my house. Didn't know that. It happened like half a year ago. Found out because of this man. I saw you on the internet and I'm here because, because of you, you know, so, right on. I'm just concerned about the LGBTQ stuff pushed at Community Health Center from the top down. I know it's being funded and it's hurting our kids, mental abuse. And I am concerned about that, the diversity, inclusion, and equity and how it's being funded and how it's being used in our schools and in our workplaces by the county. And I think that's about it. But I'm sure there's a lot more stuff that I'm going to be here for, but yeah. Against the legalized nature stuff. Shrooms are bad. It's weird to see old people advocating for that. And depression is caused by circumstance and not by a chemical imbalance in your brain. And if you start to destroy it like that and tell your kids that it's fine, they're going to start to think that a lot of other things are fine. So that's, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Richard Stafford, Chair for the Libertarian Party of Humboldt County. I come here representing myself though, as my statement has not been approved by our executive committee for the entire party's support. But I'll just speak on behalf of myself. Decriminalize Nature's five principles resonate strongly with the core principles of Libertarian Party of Humboldt County. I firmly believe in safeguarding individual rights, supporting veterans, and decriminalizing peaceful life choices. Decriminalize Nature's commitment to the grow, gather, gift model ensures that individuals, regardless of income, can exercise their freedom to access healing plants aligning with our party's dedication to individual liberty. Furthermore, Decriminalize Nature's emphasis on community-based healing and sustainable local economies not only upholds personal freedoms, but also promotes community empowerment. This approach is in harmony with our belief that it is the right of the individual to make choices that best suit their well-being and lifestyle. I appreciate Decriminalize Nature's dedication to learning from past experiences as seen in the cannabis legalization movement and their aim to prevent economic consolidation. These principles offer a promising path forward, ensuring that benefits of ethnogenic plants and fungi contribute to a more equitable and prosperous society while also fostering sustainable relations with indigenous communities, species, and habitats. I stand in support of these principles as they align with our vision for a society that values freedom, personal choice, and community well-being. I am personally myself a veteran. I have seen firsthand the effects of PTSD on my fellow service members. There have been tremendous results from the decriminalization of various substances to be able to help them medicate through community-based solutions as opposed to going through large corporations chasing synthetics and ending up contributing to the opioid epidemic. I encourage you to pass whatever resolution you need to, to get on board with the decriminalization of nature, to help contribute to the prosperous nature of our society and to help people be more free in their choices and their lifestyle. These are peaceful people that are just looking for non-harmful ways to be able to help themselves. This isn't about a gateway to pedophilia or LGBTQ agendas. This is about empowering the individual and not getting in their way, having government step out of the way so that they can live their best life. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. Okay, do we have anyone else in the audience that would care to join? Seeing no one, we're going to bring it over to Althea.
All right. Hey there. I'm very glad to see the proclamation about the day without driving or the week without driving. Again, I am, you know, offering my expertise in this area. If you need help planning your trip and figuring out how you're going to get where you need to go and how you're going to, you know, organize the activities you need to do around transportation that isn't a car. It's not necessarily going to be easy. And that's kind of the point, is that it is hard for a lot of people to get around this way. And that's why we need to make improvements to these systems and get more people using them so that there's motivation to improve them. Yeah, again, if you need help figuring out the transit system or figuring out how you're going to get places, please, please let me know. This past week, I had some out-of-town visitors in town. And as we were kind of doing the usual touristy things in Old Town, it occurred to me that a lot of the businesses in Old Town could really benefit from having an ATM close by. And Miles, this might be more of a thing for you, but I'd like to see the city explore the possibility of getting an ATM in the Eureka Visitor Center there by the gazebo just so people don't have to walk as far or, God forbid, drive to get to the closest ATM when they want to buy something with cash in Old Town. Yeah, again, glad to see the discussion about like suicide prevention and mental health. You know, we know that there's a mental health and substance abuse crisis here in Humboldt County. And when it's at the point that you have a veteran getting arrested for indecent exposure at Table Bluff, you know, because of mental health and substance abuse issues, you know, we know there's a problem. You know, it's very difficult for veterans to get healthcare up here. Easier than it used to be, but you know, it's, it's still a major problem. And we're seeing that, you know, not just with our veterans, but also with the general public. And yeah, that's all I've got for now.
Thanks, Althea. And it looks like Ash is up there? Welcome, Ash. I can.
Yes, I just wanted to comment, pretty much wanted to applaud the council for actually refraining from doing something the Board of Supervisors recently did. Charles Wilson is, you know, his public comment was cut short by like a, pretty much a pre-thought crime. They finished his sentence for him. They assumed that he was going to say something based on, you know, putting two and two what he had said before. And as far as I know, freedom of speech doesn't work like that. You know, I don't think we're exactly to the pre-thought crime era of free speech just yet. So I wanted to thank you all for, for not doing that. But also, I just wanted to talk about, you know, we had that horrible incident at the fair with the Foggy Boden Boys and Loco Fish Co. And it's just, you know, and I guess what some people might describe as, you know, unacceptable public behavior. I mean, it's just, you know, not, not the way people want to act to each other. And, you know, Jamie from Loco Fish Co., he did come out and, you know, he apologized for it. And like I said, he's going to seek counseling and stuff like that, so. But, you know, what James Graham was talking about earlier, what happened up at Table Bluff, we haven't heard word one from Gilmore because it hasn't really been, like you said, on any of the other local news besides little fledgling Lascoes populists here. You know, no one's talked about it. So he hasn't, you know, like the previous columnist was talking about, he hasn't came out saying he's going to take any steps with his addiction or his, you know, you know, his problems that led to him, you know, putting on that public display. And I also wanted to just ask why, you know, none of the council members or the Board of Supervisors responded to an email I sent regarding that incident. Like, I guess you're just indifferent to it? I don't know exactly why, but I think it might, might ring on your radar. But yeah, and it, it just kind of shows the difference that this community, like, politically treats different kinds of events. And we had, you know, the one, one guy who said some, you know, allegedly said some homophobic slurs and stuff at the fair. And it's just a media outburst. It's everywhere. His business gets canceled. I think his whole staff quit because they're getting death threats. So it's, it's kind of like an overreaction of the, you know, it's like, okay, they're, they're calling it hate. So they, it's a reaction of hate that leads to, you know, canceling his business and, you know, ruining people's lives who had a job and now they don't have a job. And then the other event up on Table Bluff doesn't get any attention at all by the local media. So there's, no, no one even knows about it except for the, you know, few people talking to you about it right now.
Thank you, Ash.
Okay.
Your time is up. Thanks for being here. Okay, do you see anybody else up there?
I see no one else.
Seeing no one else, anybody else out here want to share? Okay, we're going to close the public comment and bring it to Consent Calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22. If a member of the public would like an item on the Consent Calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the Consent Calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And I don't believe we have anything to pull. I haven't heard anything. Okay, so can we get a... All right, there she is. Okay. Can we get a motion in a second then to approve the Consent Calendar?
I'll move to approve the Consent Calendar as written.
A second.
Oh, we have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries. Councilmember Fernandez absent.
Thank you. Legislative action correspondence, does anyone have any legislative action they'd like to bring forward? Okay, seeing no one, we'll bring it to ordinances and resolutions. H1, Bill Number 1031-CS, Amending Title III, Chapter 33 of the Eureka Municipal Code, Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Judge, City Attorney Luna.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a second reading of an ordinance that was introduced at the last meeting. And so if there are not any questions or unless there are any questions, I don't have a separate presentation tonight. This is just on for adoption.
Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll open this up for public comment. Is anyone here to comment on this item? Changing the municipal code, Boards, and Commissions, and Committees? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for comments, a question, or comments, a motion, and a second. Anyone? Councilmember Costalana?
Sure. I'll move to waive full reading and read by title only and adopt Bill Number 1031-CS, An Ordinance of the City of Eureka, Amending Section 33.009, Meetings, Rules, and Regulations Quorum. A second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Are there any further comments? Please vote.
Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Yes.
Four yes votes, Councilmember Fernandez absent, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to H2, Bill Number 1030-CS, Personnel Policies with Assistant City Manager Powell.
Mayor and council, this is also the second reading of the Personnel Policies. It was first presented at our last council meeting. There were no changes proposed and it is up for adoption tonight. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Okay, are there any questions from council?
I don't have a question. I have a motion.
Oh, I'm going to open to public comment.
Oh, write that. I'm sorry.
And then I'll be right back with you. So is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this item, Personnel Policies? Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. I move we waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt Bill Number 1030-CS, An Ordinance of the City of Eureka, Amending Title III, Chapter 34, Personnel Policies, Section 34.05 through 34.44, and deleting Sections 34.55 through 34.86.
A second.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Yes.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Fernandez absent, motion carries.
Thank you. H3, Bill Number 1029 dash CS Going Out Going Out of Business Sales, City Manager or Assistant City Manager Powell.
Mayor and Council, thank you again. This is the a second reading of the ordinance that was bill number that was presented at the last meeting, repealing the need for businesses that are going out of business to obtain a permit from the city prior to advertising. As you know, it is an antiquated ordinance and we wish to repeal. No changes were suggested at the last meeting, so I put this forward to you tonight. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, seeing no one. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this item? Don't see anybody on Zoom, do you?
I do not.
Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for a motion. A second. Councilmember Bauer?
I'd like to make a motion to waive full reading, read by title only and adopt Bill Number 1029 dash CS and Ordinance of the City of Eureka, repealing Chapter 116, Going Out of Business Sales.
I'll second.
Great. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Yes.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Fernandez absent, motion carries.
Thank you. So moving on to reports and action items. We have the Eureka Crime Statistics and Security Camera Policy Update with Chief Jarvis and Brittany Powell. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Police Analyst Two Brittany Powell and I would like to share a few crime stats with you and also explain a new crime statistic gathering and reporting protocol that is being enacted nationally and that the Eureka Police Department is taking part in as of November of last year. Part of this new crime reporting model makes comparative statistics a little difficult because it's a it's different than we've been doing for generations, really. This has been in it's been in play for a couple decades, but it's just been recommended that that departments go forward with it as of January 1st of 21. And again, we took we took action in November of 22 to go forward. But we wanted to give you a little snapshot in in time of year-to-date statistics. And I've heard of a lot of public commenters over the last few months have probably looked online to what they thought were legitimate crime statistic gathering websites and thrown some stats out us out at us as a city that are not reflective of what we have. So I wanted to clarify what the statistics that we have and and also point out, these are reported crimes. Okay, so these are crimes where we took an actual crime report in the City of Eureka. And one of the differences between Nibers is that it's a national incident-based reporting system, which is the new crime reporting system replaced UCR, Uniform Crime Reporting. Uniform Crime Reporting looked at, if you like murder, rape, robbery, burglary, aggravated assault, arson, auto theft, some of the the major crimes. And as you looked at those crimes, the the predominant crime in an incident would get reported out. So if there was a robbery, an assault with a deadly weapon, an arson and an auto theft, you'd pick what you thought was the most egregious and that would be reported out. Nibers now, the new incident reporting, you can have up to 10 offenses for every incident. So I think we're going to have crime stats moving forward that will be more reflective of of reality. And there's also an ability for us to look into much more detail in each crime and and we can see relationships between suspects, victims, between different crimes that are being committed within our city. Basically, they're looked at as crimes against society, which are basically our arrests, crimes against property and crimes against persons. Crimes against persons generally get the most attention because these are your your egregious crimes, murder, manslaughter, rape, aggravated assault, simple assaults. And as you can see in the City of Eureka through 73123, because we don't have August stats available yet, we have not had a murder this year. We had no reported murders last year. And that's not consistent with some what some people have been saying as they stand up here. But in all transparency, we had two cases in August. That may change that statistic once we finish our investigation and work with the coroner's office to determine causes of death. That could change. But as of today, we have no reported murders. We had 15 reported rapes and that may seem very high, but there are no rapes reported in the City of Eureka this year where the the suspect was a stranger. And that's something in law enforcement we always look at. Do we have a stranger case where we have someone in the community preying on community members? We haven't had that. So every one of our reported rapes has been an acquaintance. Between there has been a relationship between suspect and victim. Another one that might jump out at you is the kidnapping. And that also includes false imprisonment. So the most of these are domestic violence cases where someone will keep someone from be able to move, say, if I were to say, you're not leaving this room, that's false imprisonment. If I then take you by force or fear and move you, that's kidnapping. Majority of our cases were domestic violence related, false false imprisonment cases, not kidnapping. We had no cases that we moved forward to District District Attorney's Office that were kidnapping cases this year. And if there's anything else there that grabs your attention, be happy to to answer questions or talk about it at the end. And then if, you know, Brittany and I don't have the answer on top of our head, what I'd like to do is she's going to take notes and we'll get back to you so we get you accurate information. Moving forward to crimes against property. One thing that I found really interesting with Nibers is robbery now is is called a crime against property. It's always been one of the serious persons crimes in UCR because a robbery is taking something from someone by force or fear. And if it's a commercial robbery, you're robbing a clerk or someone working at a business by force or fear. So I found it interesting that it's moved to the property side now. Robbery, we have had 46 reported. Only five of those were random or stranger type robberies on the street. In 14% or in 14 of our robberies, 30% of them, no weapons were used. 26% personal weapons were used. That'd be hands, feet or or fists. And then in 20%, a handgun was used. And those are generally commercial or one street robbery. Another big crime for Eureka is larceny or theft. And we're we're about split 70%. 70% of our cases are split right down the middle between theft from a motor vehicle and shoplifting. So, you know, we've been talking for years here about don't leave things in your car, don't leave things in view. And that's something where we can still help with that statistic. And I would say those stats are probably pretty low based on people calling just to get a a case number for their insurance company versus going through the reporting process. And then moving on to the Group B offenses, that's going to be mostly arrests. The biggest area here was disorderly conduct and 310 arrests. And majority of those are going to be for drunk in public, fighting in public, things like that. Before we move on to cameras, do you have any questions about any of the crime stats?
Councilmember Moulton, why don't you go first?
Thank you. I have two questions. Under the the list of, was it Group A, the first one, you had sexual assault and rape and you had incest and then you had sodomy and also fondling. I'm assuming those are for non-consensual moments, that sodomy is not illegal.
So Nibers breaks those down, unlike UCR used to say just rape, right? So they're now broken down by Nibers and they have very specific definitions.
Thank you. That's all. I just wanted to make sure that was a category of a different. Okay. And then for motor vehicles that are stolen, wow, that's a lot. What percentage of motor vehicles that are stolen in Eureka are recovered?
We've actually, I have that statistic for you, thanks to Brittany. And maybe you can help me find it. I believe there's been 93 motor vehicle thefts through this range period and I think, yeah.
Eighty-nine percent?
Have been recovered.
So it's a lot of vehicles getting stolen and then almost immediately being found and returned? Or not almost immediately, but, you know, relatively quickly.
It's like a Eureka Car Share Program or something?
Yeah, it's like yellow bikes. I don't know what that, okay, thank you. Involuntary car sharing.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
Were you through? Yeah. Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, Chief Jarvis, having the additional ability to add offenses, is that going to make our crime rate? I mean, it's easy to compare, you know, previous year, but if you can add a bunch more crimes, is it going to like skyrocket our crime rate?
That's why we can't really compare last year and this year because there there are potentially more offenses being recorded. I don't I don't feel that we've had this major increase in crime from what I hear from citizens, from what I've seen just in the, you know, the year and nine months I've been here. But potentially the statistics are going to blow things up. And that's why I I really wanted to talk to you tonight about we have to be careful comparing statistics, whether it's this year, next year, or this year and last year. As as we get more well-versed in this, because it's a lot of extra work for our officers, quite frankly, it's it's been quite a challenge putting this into play. So it's it's another one of those unfunded mandates where now it's taking longer for them to write reports. There's more necessary steps in every report to document these different portions of of the crime. So it's it's going to take a while to get it dialed in, but yes, you might statistically see an increase in crime.
Well, that's what I wanted to bring up because you you should, because I think there could be a, you know, an assault, but then there's other charges that go with it. And so the the public needs to understand. You know, things haven't gotten out of control. We're just doing a better job with statistics, really. So it's nothing's changed. It's just that we're there's other things that that weren't reported in the past. So I think that's what I wanted people to understand. So.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I actually have a quick question, but I think I don't think you can answer it now. So I'm just curious. So with the disorderlies, you said there were like over 300, 310. So I know you don't have any numbers from last year to compare it to, but do you feel like that's gone up or down? Just anecdotally?
Anecdotally, I would say it's probably pretty similar. You know, we we can we can tell you if you like to know how many people we arrested for drunken public, how many people we arrested for disturbing the peace or fighting in public. We can give you those statistics.
I'm curious. Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
We'll do that, too.
Okay, any? Councilmember Costalano?
Thank you. It seems like you can track the number of co-occurring incidents, you know, so like if there's, you know, something that was, I don't know, a robbery and disorderly conduct, you know, there would be the data to say like those two things happened at the same time. And so you could kind of track the number of overall like incidents, you know, and compare them to previous years in some way.
Well, not all of them would have been reported through the FBI before. So if we had a robbery and a battery in one case, the robbery would have been reported to the FBI.
Right.
We could go back and individually pull cases and read through every case and get to that. But this will enable us to do it a little easier and and just the push of a button at some point.
That makes sense.
Versus having to look through every case.
Thank you.
Reported, up to 10 offenses can be reported, whereas before it was a hierarchy rule and only the highest offense would be reported.
Got it. Thank you. And then when I looked at the the raid, the 15 incidents, but zero arrests made, is that because people don't want to press charges or is that, you know, especially I'm thinking when when it's within a, you know, someone who's familiar or why would, you know, so clearly they know who it is, right? So that's not the question.
It's a very interesting dynamic, having run a sex crimes unit for a few years. There are a lot of of dynamics that come into a decision to prosecute or not or seek prosecution, especially in in relationship type cases. So the most common is generally the the victim becomes uncooperative and decides they don't want to participate in prosecution. Or there may be a lack of evidence. It's one person's word against the others with no physical evidence. But in in our cases here, we generally find that it's an uncooperative victim that decides they don't want to go forward.
Yeah, I think the question I asked myself is like, is there a need for greater support for people who experience things like that? You know, is is there some gap there so that people have, you know, if, you know, the the support to prosecute or to go through that process? Because I'm sure it's traumatic, you know, on top of.
It is. I know there are there are several organizations that assist victims of sexual assault in this region. And and I've spoken to representatives of a few of them. So I think the resources are there, but it's a it's a complicated, that in particular is a very complicated crime to prosecute. Please.
I know our detectives work pretty closely with rape crisis teams. All victims usually go to the hospital and have SART exams as well. And there could very well be a warrant out for arrest. Or are the investigations still ongoing? A suspect known and maybe arrest will be forthcoming.
Councilmember Contreras Deluge, I see you up there.
I think actually, sorry, I I meant to lower it back down because I think actually Katie and part of Leslie's comment actually covered something that I was going to ask. So I'm going to go ahead and just lower it.
Thank you.
Something that we did find interesting and and also in relation to some of the comments that have been made at public comment is during crimes against persons, the primary weapons being used against someone during a violent attack are personal weapons, hands, feet and fists. A gun has been used in under 2% of crimes against persons in Eureka during this year, and a knife has been used in 4%. So a total of 28 incidents where there was a knife or a gun used and and that's not often what we hear. Obviously, one is too many and we strive to get those people off the streets and and prosecute those cases. However, it's not as rampant as rampant as some might lead us to believe.
Any further questions? No, carry on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then we just wanted to give you a quick update on on some of the camera placements and and where they are. And we really have had very few incidents involving the the fixed cameras. I know we had a lot of conversation about it when when they went up. And they are at the foot of Truesdale, the High Tank, Hill Ficker and Dock B, the Warfinger. And we also have our Lot Cop, which is mobile that we move around to several different locations, usually on on a complaint basis or if officers see an area where we could we could benefit by having the cameras there as as a deterrent and also as a way to to gain evidence if we do have any crimes. We've had one assault and vandalism that was captured on the camera at the foot of Truesdale, where we were able to successfully identify a suspect and ask for a warrant of arrest. We also captured a robbery at the Dock B camera. And there's a picture there on the bottom and the suspect unfortunately was so far away, we couldn't quite identify. But we just recently were given some information from the FBI that they may be able to enhance some digital video that we have. So that one may still work out for us. But the calls for service have have declined, even though some of these numbers look look pretty big. Most of them are officers doing self-initiated checks on different areas because we have, you know, as a matter of routine, we have ongoing issues at some of these places. So we have found that it has cut back on our calls for service. And the places where we put the Lot Cop have also as well. One one successful thing with the Lot Cops, we had placed it right in the middle of the Sarah Browless concert. And we had a emergency, a medical emergency in the middle of the crowd. We were able to focus in right away on that emergency and guide officers in and kind of that's that's what we were seeing from the outside. We were able to focus in with the camera and We were able to focus in with the camera and direct our personnel right into the person that needed help, and probably saved a lot of minutes and, and saved them. So there have, there have not been, um, some of the issues, uh, that were talked about and that were concerns for the cameras. Uh, we do not monitor them twenty-four seven, but we are able to go back and retrieve data if we do have a crime in the area and, and look at them. And I, I think part of the problem, um, part of the perceived problems when we were first talking about this, where people thought, you know, the, the police are gonna be watching them all the time, and we don't. You know, I wish we had enough people to have a full-time crime center, but we don't, and probably never will. Any questions on cameras?
No, you have a power.
You know, I, I'm sure there are people watching, you know, have privacy concerns. How long are we storing data for? I mean, is this something that we keep in perpetuity? Do we, you know, eliminate data after a year? What's kind of, what, what's our policy on that?
Can I defer to you, because that was part of the ordinance?
You can defer to me, and then I'll defer to Derek Howard if he's here. Uh, I think it's ninety days.
Okay.
Is how long we're keeping data, and then wiping that data on a rotating basis, so we never keep it for longer than that unless it's, uh, required as part of an investigation.
I see Derek back there nodding his head.
Oh, good.
That's what I remember as well.
Thank you, Derek.
And, and one more question I, I would, uh, like to add, this kind of related, um, do we share data unless, unless prompted? You know, we're not sharing with allied agencies just like randomly, so people understand, request comes in, we might share data with the sheriff's department, but it's not something we just blanket do, right?
That's correct, and it would be a very specific crime that we would share that information, wouldn't just be, hey, who was down there that day unless they had a, a specific crime and a specific suspect they were looking for.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Moulton?
There happens to be a Lot Cop on my street right now. Um, I'm assuming because it's somewhere people like to do donuts. I heard there's, some of these can be, uh, triggered by, um, by a noise level. Are, are the Lot Cops or any of the cameras triggered by anything other than, uh, report and then going backwards? Is there anything that might happen around them that would cause them to automatically, like, send a signal or start recording or start, um, or indicate outward that something's happening? Are they sending notifications? Are there something, anything like that?
No, um, Chief, do you have a minute? He, he has more information than I do on this. However, I don't believe that they are, um, they're recording all the time. I don't believe that they're activating or sending a signal to us, but do you have any more info on that?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, yes, the Lot Cop specifically has the ability for us to set up a parameter, um, more like a, a zone, it's an invisible zone. We can set up that if somebody crosses that line of that zone with the infrared, it will actually trigger and record an event. Uh, we do have the capabilities of having that event sent to a command center or sent to a phone. Uh, we don't have that on right now because I don't want to be woken up all night long for every cat or a person that walks past the camera. But there is that capability of that, but it's not by sound, it's by, we set up an infrared perimeter around an area. We want to monitor a park, a street, something like that, and if that perimeter is violated during a specific time we have it set, then it will make an automatic recording of that event.
Okay, but if the guys come back and start doing donuts again, we actually have to call it in?
If you call it in, and what we do then is we make a request to the company for a specific timeframe, and they'll send us clips from that timeframe of the event taking place that we can use as evidence in a case.
And any citizen that notices an incident or anything going on in the vicinity of one of these cameras could do the same?
You can make a call for service for suspicious activity in vicinity of that camera, and we can work on finding out who was responsible for doing the donuts, yes.
Thank you.
So, Councilmember Contreras Deloche, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I have a comment, so I'll save that for later.
Okay. Oh, wait, we're done. Are you done?
Uh, I was gonna say, our, our Lot Cop is back in action. It was, um, shot and killed earlier this year, and, um, was actually out of service for a couple of months while we had to do a very expensive repair. Uh, someone shot the, the brains of the actual, of the camera, so, but I'm happy to report it's back in action and, and back available. And for, for you and your constituents, if there is a need in, in a certain neighborhood, please let us know, and we will put it on the list to get it out there. And it, it is nice to have it out, so if we put it out there for a couple of days, it'll get people's attention and usually has lasting effects.
Great. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate you so much. And moving on to city investment policy, Finance Director Millar? Oh, it's, I'm sorry, standard, standard practice to take comment. So Director Millar, you're gonna have to wait just a moment. I'm gonna open this item up for public comment. Is anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Seeing no one here, is there anyone on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
So final comment from Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, um, I just, uh, a couple of things. One, I wanted to say that I appreciate, um, this presentation that the police department put together for us. Uh, I think it's really clear and really well-laid out, so I really appreciate that. And, um, you know, just going, you know, off of the difference between, I don't know if you guys recall it, NIBR, N-I-B-R, or NiBRS, or however you said it, versus the SRS one. I think ultimately that'll be a better thing. Um, it's kind of been a pet peeve of mine, um, that, that hierarchy rule where there would be one offense reported. I feel like even though this is gonna kind of expand things out, I think it's ultimately gonna give us such a better picture of what's going on. Instead of picking, you know, worst offense or whatever and focusing on that. So just looking at that list of benefits, I, I hope, I know that this is quite a task for them to be, um, moving over to that. And, um, and that there's no way to really compare back, but I think going forward, this is gonna be a really good thing, and, um, appreciate you guys putting this together for us.
Thank you. So Director Millar, city investment policy?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Uh, tonight's presentation is about the proposed investment policy. So a quick overview of the presentation, uh, the first section describes the policy objectives. Uh, the second section talks about the prudent investor standard. We'll go over authorized investments, uh, reporting, and then, uh, the direction I hope this policy takes us. So the first section, policy objectives, so there's a number of different objectives in this policy. Uh, the first one is investment of idle funds. Uh, so the city every year has a large number of obligations, but typically we have additional cash or cash beyond our obligations. Uh, sometimes this is in the form of reserves, uh, but there are other reasons for having excess cash. Uh, when you have excess cash, uh, and you have opportunities to, uh, make some money on that cash through investment products, uh, it's a good use of the city's funds to take advantage of that. Uh, the second objective is ensuring availability. Uh, what does this mean? Uh, well, that has to do with those obligations that we have to meet every fiscal year. Uh, I, I can't put every dollar of the city's into an investment product, uh, because we need to use those dollars for payroll and projects. Uh, so in the finance department, what we do is a cash flow analysis. So we look out twelve to twenty-four months and try to forecast, um, all of the city's expenditures. Uh, by doing that, we can see the minimum and maximum cash balance, uh, that we'll need to make our payments. Uh, so ensuring availability is really important because, uh, if we were to overextend ourselves in any one investment product, uh, that could put us in a position where we're not able to make a payment. Uh, liquidity, so we need to be mindful of liquidity. Uh, liquidity is the ability to, uh, turn that investment product back into cash that we can use. Uh, some products, uh, might have low risk, but little or low liquidity. Uh, for example, you can buy treasury bonds, uh, in a, uh, one month or for one month or for thirty years. Uh, obviously, if you buy that one-month product, you'll get your money back within thirty days, but if you buy that thirty-year product, you might not see a return for a long time. And then yield, uh, what yield mean, it means is the rate of return or the money that you would make off an investment. Uh, sometimes you might find two different investment products with similar risk, um, characteristics and, but with different, uh, yield. So if you have two products that share the same risk, but one is offering more yield, obviously, we would want to choose the product that is gonna give us more return on our money. Uh, the second section is the prudent investor standard. Uh, so this is a mandate that, uh, is required by the state, uh, government code. Uh, what this means is that we are responsible, um, with the city's money. Uh, that includes our risk and return objectives, so we want to make sure that we're looking for low-risk products, uh, that offer a decent return. We want to do our due diligence, so we want to make sure we understand the product, products that we're investing in. Uh, we want to review our portfolio, so once we make an investment, we want it to review it periodically. And we want to make investments that are in the best interest of the city. So the council or the city treasurer or the finance director or even a third party, an investment advisor, uh, might have different risk appetites. Uh, I might like to purchase very risky investments on my own, uh, but that is not a standard that I would apply, uh, making investments for the city. So despite who the investor is, uh, we want to be, uh, conscious of what is best for the city and not best for the individual making that investment. And then legal considerations, so the city can only invest in certain products, so we do have to make sure what we're putting our money in is actually something that we're allowed to do. And then liquidity and time horizons, uh, again, uh, we want to make sure that we do not put too much money to work and, um, restrict ourselves from making our day-to-day obligations. So authorized investments, so every investment product that we're allowed to purchase as a city is governed by the California State Government Code. There's a long list, I'm not gonna go through every product. It also limits us on the product based on how long that investment is for. Again, treasury bonds, you can invest for a year or ten years or thirty years. Uh, it limits us to how much of our portfolio any one product can have. For example, a money market fund can only be twenty percent of our portfolio. And then there are quality requirements. Uh, in some cases, uh, products are rated by a number of different rating agencies. Typically, this has to do with bonds. Uh, you might hear the term, uh, triple A or double B minus. That has to do with the risk profile of a bond investment. Uh, I'd like to dive into the investment type. I think, uh, this is important to understand. Uh, and our policy is, um, capturing the products that were updated by the state as of January first, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, so when we look at the types of products that one can invest in, uh, there's typically three different categories. So cash and cash equivalents. These are very low-risk investments. They include, uh, your savings account, a CD, a money market fund, uh, treasury bonds. Uh, these are investments that don't generate a high yield but are very safe. Then you have bonds, so bonds are considered medium risk. Of course, there are very safe bonds and very, uh, risky bonds, but typically, they are less risky than stocks. This is, uh, stocks are one of the highest-risk investments out there because there is a non-zero chance that that investment can go to zero. Uh, the state says it's okay to invest in this category. Uh, there's a couple options in this category, but a lot of things that we can't invest in, and then we do not have the option of putting our money into stock investments. Another way to look at this is, uh, by looking at what's on this chart. So the Y-axis is your return, so as you go up, uh, you would expect a higher return. And then on the X-axis is risk, so as you go to the right, uh, you expect more risk or more volatility in the investment. A good example here is cash, uh, it's no risk at all, and then at the very top of the chart would be something exotic like Bitcoin. Uh, the state is limiting the city to invest in things that are on the bottom-left side of the chart. Reporting, so this policy requires the Finance Director to provide a report that talks about type of investment, date of maturity, so how long that investment is for, cost of security, current market value, rate of return, and a few other data points. Uh, this report would come to Council, uh, on a monthly basis, and typically on the consent calendar. So that kind of guided us through the investment policy itself, and this is where I would like to take us. Um, so currently, a hundred percent of our portfolio is in LEAF. LEAF is a investment fund run by the state treasurer. Uh, as of six-thirty-twenty-three, uh, LEAF returned about three percent that quarter, which isn't bad, but we could do better. Uh, so the direction I'd like to head is investing in treasury bonds. Why treasury bonds? Well, if you look at, uh, the most current rates, and here I have, uh, the one-month treasury bill, uh, you can see on this side of the chart, um, how much treasure, or a one-month bill has returned over the years. And then down here, we're going back to January of two thousand twenty. So you can see for a long time, for about two and a half years, that, uh, one-month treasury bill returned almost zero percent on your investment. But today, um, that same bill will return over five percent. What's also unique about treasury investments right now is, uh, the return versus the maturity date. So this is the yield curve. It's a, a fairly popular chart that, uh, the markets like to look at, um, to determine where the economy's headed. Typically, when you hear that the yield curve is inverted, like that black line, uh, people are afraid that we're going into a recession. Uh, this has been the case since COVID, so don't worry about the recessions. This chart is giving off bad signals. Uh, but it is telling us, uh, where the best place to put our money is. So if you look at the bottom, uh, that is matured. So if you look at the bottom, that is maturity. So on the very left, that's a one-month bill. And on the very right, that's a 30-year bill or bond. And then that access is or axis is the rate of return. Typically, this graph looks like that red line during normal times. Investors usually demand a higher rate of return the longer that investment or the longer the maturity is. So I would expect a better rate if I'm going to set my money away for 30 years versus one year. That's not the case today. Today, if you look at this chart, less time equals more money. This is counterintuitive, but good for us. So what is this is telling us is that we do not need to take or duration risk, which is putting your money away for too long and risking liquidity. So if you look at a treasury bond based on the authorized investments, it really hits every category. It's approved by the state code. Maximum maturity is five years, but based on that chart, we shouldn't go out beyond two years. We don't have a cap on the percentage of the portfolio. We can take 100% of that LEAF investment and put it into treasury bonds and make an additional 2% per year. And then there are no quality requirements. We're assuming that treasury bonds are pretty much risk-free. So that or one last thing is the portfolio line of credit. So when you have an investment portfolio, some firms will allow you to have a credit line based on a percentage of that portfolio. So they assume that if you put $1 million in treasury bonds, that they're okay lending you half a million dollars because they know once that mature or that investment matures, they'll have $1 million of your money. Why would we do this? There could be urgent cash flow needs for emergencies. So we might have a street failure or maybe we have another pandemic where we need cash right away, and that would help us deal with liquidity. It also allows us to avoid liquidating any assets and losing return. So we might decide, well, you know, we have a few obligations we need to make, but we don't want to divest. We rather borrow some money for a week or two and then pay it back and not pay any interest and avoid, you know, lowering the overall rate of return of our portfolio. So here's my recommendation for tonight. And I would be happy to answer any questions about the policy or our investment strategy.
Thank you. Do we have any? Councilmember Castellano?
Just a couple of small questions. With the portfolio line of credit, does it reduce the rate of return when you have that kind of insurance? I don't think all investments have that or?
It would if you had to, if you didn't pay back whatever credit you requested. So if for some reason we had to borrow against our portfolio and we were unable to pay like within that month, then you would get charged interest. You do get charged a rate of interest that's typically better than other lines of credit. But that would reduce your return. But also, at the same time, if we're having to do that, then we've overcommitted ourselves and we didn't analyze our needs properly.
Thank you. And then are you thinking kind of like a stack of investments of different periods? You know, like a one-month kind of investment or, you know, so that there's different investments becoming liquid at different times or?
Correct. And typically, when you go to a broker, they are going to offer you a portfolio that's going to hold a number of different maturities. But yes, usually the strategy is to not put all of the money into one duration, but to do what you've brought up. So, you know, you're going to tranche out your portfolio kind of based on the rates of today. So you might, you know, if rates are better at the one-month mark or the six-month mark than the two-year mark, you, your portfolio might be weighted heavier on the shorter-term products. But at the same time, you know, we don't know what's going to happen in six months. So you kind of want to balance that strategy. Because once, I'm sorry, once that investment matures and get your money back, you're stuck with cash again, so you might not have the same opportunities in six months as you do today.
Councilmember Bauer?
Director Malar, have we ever had this opportunity before to invest in something other than LEAF?
Yeah, there have been times where we've utilized other investment agencies or to kind of manage our portfolio. But I would say that treasury rates were not as high as they are today. So this is really an easy decision. And in the future, I think it would be a good thing to have an investment advisor help us navigate the world beyond treasury bonds. Because there are, there, there's a quite a long list of products. And to have expertise in all of, all of those products requires, you know, like someone that has a background in finance.
No, I just want to finish with, thanks for giving a presentation. You like turned a complicated issue into something that was even I understood. And I don't know anything about finance, so thank you.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche, did you have any questions? I can't see you up there.
Nope, I think it's a great presentation. I don't, I agree. It's laid out really well.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing no one in the audience, can you see on Zoom? Do you see anyone?
I'm seeing no one on Zoom.
Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Well, the, whatever. The adoption of the policy and procedures. Councilmember Bauer?
I'll make a motion to receive the report and adopt policies and procedures, file number 2.70, subject investment policy, and authorize the city manager to sign agreement for a portfolio line of credit.
I'll second. Great. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yes.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Fernandez absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. And at this time, we're going to take a bio break, probably seven minutes. See in seven. It's lucky. It's lucky. So friends, the meeting is beginning. An extra minute and a half even. Feel so proud.
All right, friends. Thank you. We're going to reopen or reconvene our city council meeting this evening with I three Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation Memorandum of Understanding. And that is with City Manager Slattery.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me if I'm a little bit off. I'm still kind of recuperate, trying to recuperate from Director Malar saying that he would make aggressive investments as an individual, so. This, this item here is related to an MOU with Rural Communities and Housing Corporation, Development Housing Corporation, excuse me. We have been working with them for at least six months now. Just to give the history related to this item here. I was going to make a presentation. I know that there's going to be a lot of other presentations that come in related to this item, and I just wanted to stick to the, the background for it and to the MOU itself, so. These is related to the properties that we call the Sunset Properties. And the Sunset Properties are located in between Harris and Henderson, just to the west of Fairfield. These are the properties that were results of our housing element. When we adopted our housing element, went out to the first RFP, Link proposed, responded to that, they rewarded that. After that, we were about to go out to our second RFP. That included some properties that were in the Old Town area. At that time, we had a lot of opposition related to that. And so we held three community members, community meetings, public meetings that were noticed in the area, had a lot of participation in that. Community made it very clear that they weren't proponents of utilizing those lots. And so at that time, staff decided to put a, a, a hold on the housing element. The housing element was put on hold. We offered to the public and to other private property owners the opportunity to trade properties for those so that we wouldn't lose any parking in that Old Town area. At that time, we delayed the housing element for approximately six months. We had negotiations with multiple developers and multiple businesses in Eureka. As a result of that, one came through. That was in an agreement with Greg Pearson and Pearson Development. And we switched properties at Fifth and G, excuse me, Fifth and H, Fourth and G, and Fifth and K. And those properties were exchanged for these Sunset properties. So at that time, when they found out, I believe he's a project manager, but Pat McDonald is extremely persistent and works with Pacific affiliates. And they had done projects with rural communities in the past, housing-related projects, and expressed their interest in this property. Since then, we've been working with them on what it would look like to, to have them have an MOU to develop these properties to meet our housing element goals and, and work with them in, on the MOU. As council knows, I should go back. After we did the swap with the properties, we went back to HCD Housing Community Development with the state, had our housing element updated. Now these properties are part of our housing element. So as those properties being part of our housing elements, we have different options on, on the ability to get them developed. One is through RFPs, which we've done, as you guys know, with different properties. And the other is to work directly with a developer who's willing to meet the parameters set aside in our housing element, both the number of units, how long they remain affordable, all of those things. And so we've been working with rural communities and also along with Pacific Builders, who is their contractor that would be working on this job, to establish the guidelines on what it would look like for them to develop this and get into a disposition and development agreement with the city on these properties. So we developed this MOU. The main requirements of the MOU are that rural communities in partnership with the city notice a public meeting for all of the neighbors in the adjacent area, not come with any preconceived conceptual designs or anything like that, but just as a listening session to let them know the number of units, what they're looking at for those number of units, maybe some timeframes, but also to mainly receive feedback from the neighbors, get an idea of some of their concerns, which I know we've already heard as a part of the housing element update. And then, once they receive those, that input, go work on some mitigating measures for those concerns, bring that development, the conceptual design back to council after that public meeting. And that would be just to receive input from the city council. Once that input is received, they would go through the process of development, similar to what Link has done. So that's the basic framework for this MOU and how we got here. And I'm available for questions, as well as representatives from rural communities and also Pacific Builders as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public? Welcome.
Good evening. I'm, I'm Ciara Braggs. I'm the CMS waiver and employment specialist manager at Rebel Coast Regional Center, and I'm also our de facto housing specialist. And I'm here to offer our support for this MOU and anything that you guys can do with Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation. We've actually funded four projects with them, three down in Mendocino County, and I say funded in part, and one in Lake County. And so we started working with them back in 2017. And not only are they really talented housing developers who carry their projects to completion on time, are super organized with their funding requests and getting all of the many different funders in the same room, Zoom room at the same time, and all the pieces in place, but their hearts are so committed to affordable housing and creating really vibrant communities for the people that live where they build housing. So it's, they're just really wonderful partners to work with. And to give you guys background on, on our need as well. So we serve about 5,000 people with intellectual and developmental disabilities in Humboldt, Delnor, Lake, and Mendocino Counties. And about 2,000 of those people are here in Humboldt. And pretty recently, we did a survey, and about 200 of the people that we serve are in need of more suitable housing. Either they're homeless, they're on the verge of homelessness, or wherever they live is really not the best thing for them. So we have a need that we see for affordable housing. And the people that we serve are typically extremely low-income or very low, or low-income. And so this project, you know, I think would be really beneficial to our community. So want to make sure that we offer our support. And we have been actually, since we started those projects in Mendocino, we've been asking every year, hey, you guys, do you have a project in Humboldt that you can apply to get some money from us and we can partner on? And they just haven't had the opportunity to have an actual parcel that was viable. So this would give us an opportunity. We did request $1 million from the Department of Developmental Services, and this would give them the opportunity to apply for those funds from us. So we really would love to see this come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience, anyone else that would like to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it over to Althea.
Yep, just commenting in full support of this. You know, this is a semi-local company, you know, being based in Yukaya. And, you know, that parcel of land has been empty for a really long time. Yeah, that's my, my home neighborhood. And yeah, I'm fully in support of this, this housing development.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, we'll bring it back to council. For comments. It's the end of the night. Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah, thank you. I'm very excited for this, this upcoming development. It's, you know, I've definitely a big fan of Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation and the work they've done, you know, in communities. And yeah, and thank you, Ms. Braggs, for coming forward. And speaking of your support, I definitely, you know, recognize the need in our community. You know, and I think everyone here knows this, but perhaps not the public who, who might be watching. But, you know, I don't know if this project has the capacity, but if it's ever possible to create opportunities for homeownership as, as part of these developments, I am fully on board with that and, you know. Yeah, I know there's some struggles with that, but I just want to just speak to that need and that, you know, if we can find even like small, you know, a small sub, like condo-ization of something that could, you know, help, you know, people build equity through homeownership, I'd be also on board with that and understand if, you know, that's not possible with this development as well.
Do we have any other comments or action? Councilmember Bauer?
I'll make a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding with Rural Communities Housing Development Corporation, establishing terms and understanding between the city and RCHDC concerning the development, construction, and operation of affordable housing on the city. and operation of affordable housing on the city-owned property.
Can we get a second, councilman?
I'd like a second.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I just really appreciate that the public input is codified in here and specifically before the plans come to council. So often, the public seems to find out about stuff once it's already too late to make certain changes. So I'm glad that that's part of this. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Please vote.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yes.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Fernandez absent, motion carries.
Thank you. Future agenda items, anybody have any? Seeing no one, we will move to city manager reports with City Manager Slattery.
Thank you again, Mayor, and good evening again, Mayor and council. For tonight, it's going to be a presentation by our community services recreation supervisor, Mr. Jim Thomas. But prior to that happening, I just want to make a quick announcement that there's going to be a press release sent out. This will be the first, I guess I would call it, locally public announcement about the Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Grant that the city partnered with the Link nonprofit for the Scattered Side Project in Eureka. The City of Eureka and Link were awarded $30 million for the Scattered Side Project. And 20 million of that, I did provide some misinformation. I went off the initial response. The actual numbers is $30 million that we're receiving, which is a little less than what I initially said. But 20 million of that will be going to fund the construction of the development. And 10 million of that will go towards improvements for transportation, not only public transit, but also for bike boulevards, trails, those type of things in Cooper Gulch. So there'll be a press release going out. So with that, I welcome Rec Supervisor Thomas up here for a presentation on the summer activities and community services.
Welcome, Jim. And that's awesome news, City Manager Slattery. Thank you for sharing that.
Looks like we're good to go. All right. Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, council. I'm pleased to be here tonight to share the recreation report from the summer of 2023 and also share some of the upcoming things that we have in the Recreation and Community Services Department. So on June 3rd, we started off the summer with our Forest Moon Festival. We had about 800 people in attendance and 250 attended the movie in the park. One of the coolest things I heard from the day was talking to a family from LA that pulled an all-nighter driving Friday to make it up here to our event. So I thought that was a really cool standout conversation. Family of five that thought it'd be a really cool thing to make it up here. We also had a RC car event at the municipal auditorium. We partnered up with 707 Humboldt RC Group. And there was 225 people in attendance. They set up their climber courses. They set up different racetracks, had an ice cream truck, and definitely a really successful event that we're hoping to have more of in the coming months. Well, and we're all familiar with Get Out on Play Day. It's the ninth, this was the ninth annual this summer. And I am estimating that about between all the locations, we had 2,000 people show up and go to all the events. Great partners from all across the county. And I am happy to share the Joseph Carter video production from the highlights of the event. That's not it. Yes.
Let's go to share the audio.
Thank you for the assistance.
He truly is the wizard.
And play. My mouse won't move.
You might have to.
And there we go. Highlights from Get Out on Play Day. Really fun day for the community. And at the conclusion of the Sequoia Park festivities, myself and Mayor Burgele left drenched after being pelted with water balloons. Next year will be a decade for that event, and we're going to try to make it bigger and better each year. We also had our summer camps. Of course, during the summertime this year, we had a full 40 enrollment for all of the camps except for one week. We had a Camp Sequoia, which was an environmental education camp at Sequoia Park. Camp Cooper, which is a free environmental education camp for underprivileged youth. And then our Camp All-Stars at Hammond Park. Lots of different great activities throughout the summer to keep kids safe and active. We had a volleyball camp at the Adorni Center for the first time this year as well. We had 10 in attendance. And it was for ages nine to 12, focused on improving their skills and practicing different drills and getting some scrimmage time in there. Definitely a success. Hopefully, we'll bring that one back as well. Skate nights in July, we had 18 kids and 54 adults attend. It's a fun, kind of groovy way to spend your Friday night, get the disco ball out. And if you don't know how to skate, we help you with the walker there. The August Trash Bash, we had 36 people in attendance. This is an ongoing project we work on with Pacific Outfitters in Still Humboldt. We worked behind Walmart to remove 2,600 pounds of trash from the waterfront trail. Since 2017, the beginning of the Trash Bash, we are now over 90,000 pounds removed from the waterfront trail and surrounding areas. So definitely a really impactful event and a great partnership with Still and Pacific Outfitters, Pack Out Green Team specifically. The Adult Softball League, 31 teams were in the league this summer in four different divisions. It's a very consistent, well-run program. People know what to expect from it, and they have a great time playing. And it's competitive but fun at the same time. So it's a good, consistent, well-run program. Our community fitness classes, we have Zumba, yoga, Silver Sneakers, and the Warrior Strength. They're keeping people active at the Adorni Center. We have some very excitable leaders that take the initiative to have those classes, and we are very grateful for them. Our drop-in sports, basketball and pickleball at the Adorni Center are steadily seeing over 20 people, which I'm very pleased with that turnout. I think it's, you know, we're filling up the gym and keeping people moving around. So another success coming from the Adorni Center. So that was kind of the summer's review. So you may be wondering what would be coming up next in the Recreation and Community Services world. So right now, we're in Volunteer Month. It's September. There's a volunteer event every Saturday of this month. We just had the Old Town Cleanup. And next week, we'll be at the Del Norte Dog Park. The following, we'll be back at Old Town at the gazebo, continuing an ongoing project with the Weatt Cultural Center. The Sequoia Park Ivy League will take on the Ivy on September 23rd. And then we're going to round it out with a community barbecue with different partners, excuse me, community partnerships that are going to be there. We're going to have like the volunteer trail stewards show up, all these different volunteer groups, Casa Humboldt, Big Brothers, Big Sisters. There will be Latino Outdoors, Central Del Playbowl, who have been taking care of the flower beds at Hammond Park. And we're going to do a free barbecue that day, too. So some lawn games, face painting. So hopefully, all of you would be able to make it if you have the time. Love to see you there. And each event in Volunteer Month has a prize for people that attend to. We have our adult sports coming up as we move indoors for the seasons. We have women's basketball, or excuse me, women's volleyball that starts on September 18th. And our men's basketball league starts on October 12th, with registration closing here in a couple of weeks. So beat the buzzer and get your team in there for an opportunity to play. Our Outside the Box After School Program started up, but the school schedule coming back on August 21st. A good opportunity for kids to continue what they're doing after school and be in a safe, healthy, happy environment and keep good activities going. We do have a few openings left in that program. So if you know anybody who's looking for after-school care, please forward them on to the Adorni Center's phone number, 441-4248, and we can hopefully fill those spots up sooner than later. So here's just kind of an overview of the schedule of what we have coming up. Kind of take a look at that for a second or go back on the video later if you need to reference that again or find it on our Facebook page or on the Community Services page. And we also have a recreation survey that we've been working on. It's going to be coming out soon. Definitely want to get input from the community on how we can better serve and implement new programs and maybe strengthen ones that we have going currently. And we'd love to share that with council and you, Mayor, excuse me, you, Mayor Burgele, as well, before it goes out to the public. But I think it's a really good opportunity to see what we can do in Recreation and Community Services better and get that feedback from the people that we're serving. And these are just some ideas down the line. These aren't like being planned yet. They're just kind of some ideas for the future. The survey coming out, environmental education or nature-based recreation program. We need to develop a teen program here because I think we could use a little bit more of that in town. We're also got our Cooper Gulch facility back. And it'd be nice to see Food for People was using it. And now we just recently got it back in June and love to see some increased usage there. Community classes, we'd like to expand upon those. Potentially a concert, cultural event. We're going to try recruitment for the youth council again with a new approach and different timing. We're also going to try the Redwood Coast Grand Slam Baseball Tournament at a different time of year and potentially with increased partnership engagement. Pickleball tournament in the winter and some break camps in Thanksgiving and winter as well. And yeah, I'm glad I could be here tonight to kind of share the community services and recreation activities we've been doing and what's coming next. And I would turn it over if you have any questions.
Councilmember Walton?
Hey, thank you. And thank you for that presentation. Delightful to see so much fun and entertaining stuff going on for folks of all ages. I just had a quick question about the Outside the Box Program. Is there transportation available? It is, do you know if that comes with transportation? It's an after-school program, so can.
Does not come with transportation. We do work with the schools usually that are close by. So if it's a Washington, yeah, Washington and Cutton and Ridgewood as well. But there is no, yeah, they'd have to get transported there.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Are there scholarships available for that? Is that a free program?
That one, I don't believe we have scholarships for that one. That one would be paid in full.
Okay. I wish I had a more uplifting question to ask you. Still a good program. Thank you.
I will say that, I don't know if this is in the interest of you. I'm sure it's not, but city employees do get half off of.
I wasn't asking for myself.
Maybe even free, is it free or half off?
I think it's half.
I do have, I do have a kid in that age range.
But there's a lot of city employees out there watching this, I'm sure. That would be, really appreciate to know that their kids get half off when they go.
I just happen to represent the second ward, which has the most elementary school-age students of anyone in the city and is not anywhere close to where Outside the Box is held. So just thinking about how to maybe get some kids from the neighborhood over there, since you have openings. Thank you.
I mean, we can bring that up in our two-by-twos. We did operate, as Rec Supervisor Thomas knows, we did operate an after-school program at Cooper Gulch when that facility was freed up. And we did work with Eureka City Schools. Eureka City Schools was a great partner in bringing kids and adding that to their bus route. We could broach the subject for Outside the Box as well. See what they say.
Future programming as well.
Might be worth looking into to see if there's any desire for that or any need for that, yeah.
Councilmember Castellano.
I was going to bring this up in my councilmember report, but I've been attending this community, Eureka Community School Advisory Panel Working Group. And I think there could be some, I'm almost certain there are opportunities for cross-pollination and collaboration there, possibly even maybe funding for children who might not be able to attend some of these things. So, yeah, maybe I'll follow up with you.
Yeah, I'd definitely be glad to follow up with you on that.
Councilmember Bauer?
I just want to thank you, Jim, and the whole, all the staff at Parks and Rec. You guys do a great job of getting people out. We have a lot of great facilities. Going to the skate park on Get Out on Play Day was so much fun and all those little shredders out there. So appreciate what you do.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I can't tell, does Renee have her hand up? Does not.
She does not.
Okay. And I'm just curious, Jim, so I saw that you have a Halloween event. Are you going to do the costume drive again this year? And when will that start?
That would be Cape that does that, actually.
Oh, never mind.
Yeah.
I should know that.
We do partner with community service, but yes, we will be having
a little cross-pollination.
the Halloween costume party. And I'm sure we'll also have the gift drive for that. What do we call that? Assistant City Manager Pal, being such a participant in that with Rotary.
Yes, Rotary supports a family through the Cape program. And then city employees support children of the Cape families.
They pick children and get gifts for all the disadvantaged kids.
For the holiday rate. Do you have another question? No?
And I too, Jim, I just wanted to thank you. You are just doing such a fabulous job. And just, you could see in the video, just all of the joy that is brought together by all of the things that you do. We should all have such a fun job, seriously. Thank you so much. You are appreciated.
Glad to be around great people at a great time.
Gotcha.
Working out good.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
And we will move on to council reports. And today, we will start with Councilmember Castellano. And today, we will start with Councilmember Castellano.
Okay, um, I attended the Community Economic Resilience Consortium meeting, uh, where Senator McGuire was there, talking about his priorities. And the, the, I attended the Humboldt County Association of Governments meeting, um, the Workforce Development Board meeting, which isn't part of my council duties, but it is about developing workforce opportunities in the region. Um, uh, the Redwood Empire Division Meeting from CalCities, where I, I think I'm the president of the, of the division this, in this upcoming year. Um, so hopefully we'll have some fun as a region. Um, the Humboldt Transit Authority, a special meeting, uh, the Eureka Main Street uh, General Meeting. I just want to appreciate all the people who stepped forward to become new board members. It's, yeah, just thank you to that group of folks. Um, I, the Noddy City Council thing, I was uh, elected to the state CalNonprofits Board. Uh, so I'll be representing the community there in that uh, that board, um, that kind of governs policy and, and ideas that support nonprofits, which is a huge part of the state econ- and local economy. Um, I attended and uh, was perhaps dressed as a giant uh, heron at the Festival of Dreams. Um, and I continue to hold housing meetings on Monday. I went to the Labor Day picnic uh, that the unions put on yesterday. And as I said before, the Community School Advisory Council.
I need a nap. Um, Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, that's a hard act to follow. I've been sick for a little while, but here's my, my list of stuff. Um, I um, had met with just some local commu- um, concerned citizens about some different uh, issues, one of which has just been really active, um, working in the Measures E Committee and had some, a lot of uh, feedback and some ideas that they wanted to see. I met with a couple of local churches, cleared up some misconceptions. We have some more people who are wanting to um, participate. Worked with um, our city manager on that, um, getting them to uh, for them to be able to participate in um, food bank and some other things like that for the community. Met with the Clark Museum Board, um, about some of their future plans. Um, this isn't really related to city council, but attended Advanced Native Political Leadership Forum on building an inclusive ecosystem approach to politics. Um, and then of course, I got to attend Friday Night Market and Arts Alive. I also went to the Festival of Dreams, um, which was that interactive art exhibit. And that was just really, I didn't take my little boy, but I wish I had because um, it was so cool. And um, it was really neat to see these kind of like interactive art displays. And so, that's, that's my wrap-up.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Molton?
Thank you, mayor. Um, let's see, I uh, don't have any travel to report. Attended Arts Alive. I highly recommend everyone go to the Morse Graves Museum of Art and check out Thirty Thousand Salmon, which is a piece that was created during uh, the giant fish kill after they dammed the Klamath River. And they have brought it back in order to celebrate the undamning of the Klamath River, and it is absolutely uh, just magnificent. It's this huge, you gotta go see it, at the Morse Graves. Um, I'm, I wanted to let people know in the Second Ward or over in South Eureka that the South Eureka Neighborhood Alliance is hosting a Zoom call with Sergeant Harvey from the CHP to talk about their plans at the Jacob Campus, should they purchase it. Um, and they're interested in engaging the community, so now is the time to be talking to them. I'm hoping to get on that call. I'm also looking forward to the Chamber Two-by-Two next week, and the League of California Cities coming up. So, it's going to be a busy September.
Thank you. And Councilmember Bauer?
I've been enjoying Friday Night Markets. Um, they've been just so well-attended, uh, and been going to pretty much every one of them. I went to a Coast Guard Appreciation Dinner at the Elks, and that was a great time. And I got to tell uh, many of them how much I appreciate knowing that they're around when I'm not in the ocean on my little boat, you know, I really appreciate those, those folks. Uh, September eighteenth, uh, I will have a town hall meeting at the gazebo in Sequoia Park. And Supervisor Arroyo will be there because she represents a lot of uh, the Fourth Ward. At five-thirty, um, we'll be doing a meet-and-greet and talking about what's going on in the city. So, I hope people will come and, and uh, hang out for, for an hour or so.
What day is that?
Uh, September eighteenth, a Monday.
Monday.
Five-thirty, at the gazebo. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and I, I forgot to put something in my report too that's so exciting. So, um, Swan and I got to go out for the dinner. We got to go serve dinner to the Coast Guard at the McKinleyville Base and at the Samoa Base, and I got to drive the Gator. It was awesome, but we won't say that out loud. Oops, but anyway. Just on TV, just for all of you out there, it was the bomb. And we got to look at the helicopter, and I just, again, I really appreciate all that they do. They just really bring a lot to our community. And with that, any further comments? No? We're adjourned.
Feel better? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Thank you, I appreciate it.